I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. The community can attend council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 2321, Sipley Channel 34, or listen live by calling 510-335-7371. And we are now streaming on YouTube. I will call roll, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Here.
Council Vice President Kritzner.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Khan.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Fields?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's, we're all in person. Let's, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. That was fun. We haven't done that in a long time. The first item on the agenda is items from the audience, where members of the public inform the council of their views. Speakers have four minutes to address the council on any topic, and during that time, will not engage the council staff or other audience members in conversation, debate, or question-answer sessions. Councilmembers generally do not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at council@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have four minutes to address the council. There is a timer on the podium. When the green light blinks, there are two minutes left. Steady yellow means there is one minute left, and the red light indicates your four minutes to speak is up. Comments that go beyond the allotted time will be cut off. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits any public comment during the council meetings in support or opposition of ballot measures or candidates. So, this is our list tonight. I will start with Alex Zimmerman, and then Rene Ferguson, then David Morton, and then David Haynes.
I want to speak about something because you look to me all like a Nazi pig, you know what it means, Democrat mafia. You're mayor, member of regional policy, and for last year, meeting come every week, every month, no public comment. But week ago, she's a chair before the Peter Beckenbauer, Beckenbauer, yeah, consul, yeah, he never have a public comment, he don't need this, he sit chamber for 30 years, he not care about nothing. But she a chair last weekend, she don't want what is public speak to. I present in every meeting, inside, in person. So she look to me like a Nazi pig, you know what it means? Or Nazi, them Nazi socialist mafia bandito, it's exactly what's happened. Why she don't give public comment? And last time, she talking about taxes. When you don't have public hearing about taxes, you all criminal, without exception. It's a pure banditism. Yeah. It's number one. Number two, Bellevue right now, it will be a number one city in America when white people will be minority. It's very unique situation, what has come for last 10 years, what is don't have analogy in America. It's very interesting. And who come to Bellevue right now? People from Shanghai, Calcutta, and other city. They are slave, they born like a slave, and they come like a slave. This slave cannot make us life better, it's worse, in exactly Bellevue worse, because I live in Bellevue more than 35 years, I know everything about Bellevue. 35 years is enough. Guys, situation so unique, you know what it means, because Europe have similar situation right now. Europe dead right now. White people in Europe dead right now, totally, you know what it means? Because it same situation come again. Slave come from different country. Most of them, they born like a slave. So in this situation, everybody what is in his size right now, will be reflect this. And Amazon one bring another 30,000 people, you know what it means? Microsoft bring another, but Amazon bring another 30,000 people, this all will be a slave. They come from country, what is have slave mentality for thousand years. It's totally different. It's not about race, remember. It's not about race, it's about culture. White people have different culture for thousand years. People from different country, you know what it means, like Shanghai, or India, for example, or another country, they are slave for thousand years. You understand about talking? And you sit here, don't do nothing about this, like pure freaking idiot, like a zombie, you know what it means? Everybody scared touch this problem. Look Europe, look, you all speak English, maybe another languages too, I speak four. So go look what is in Europe right now, Europe dead right now, no more white people in Europe, it's gone, it will gone forever. You understand about talking? We need stand up right now, because it's change us culture. It's America, we have a culture what is belong only to United States of America, in unique constitution, what is don't have analogy in human history, in new human history, you know what it means? We need something doing about this guy, we cannot sit down. It to me, this look like pure Holocaust. Why? I am a Jew, you know what it means? Three my generation have Holocaust, in my eyes. You understand about talking? It will be worse, it's never will be better. So I, stand up, stop and acting like a idiot. Thank you very much.
My name is Rene Ferguson, and I just want to thank you all for being here and having, just showing up, and thank you Mayor Bernie for leading our city as the best you can, so I appreciate that. I've been in Redmond for seven years, and I have a family of four. I have a daughter that graduated from Redmond High School, she's currently now at ASU. I have a son that's a junior, and my husband had worked at Hope Link for seven years, so we are pretty much indebted into the community. I live at Terrace Hill Apartments, they are managed and owned by Imagine Housing and Allied Properties, and our community is made up of 90% Latinos. And August 7th, more than half of us received a 30-day notice for non-payment of rent. We have gone through four property managers and four case managers in the last four years. There are no resources that we are aware of. And I really, really believe it's unjust to give the residents there that do not speak or write in English these notices in English only, there is no equity, there is no inclusion, and so I don't think that that's right. I urge you to follow through on accountability that was supposed to happen with Imagine Housing reporting monthly progress to Arch, but include resident input. Just hearing from Imagine staff isn't providing the full picture. This marginalizes residents instead of centering them. There should be a space for residents to safely communicate challenges without the fear of putting their housing at risk. There needs to be some type of community oversight entity to address complaints, which isn't just about Imagine residents would benefit others being served by local nonprofits, who may have nowhere to go with their complaints. Currently, the IH, Imagine Housing grievance process is handled by a resident hotline, staffed by Imagine, but it is not clear who that person is and what the process is. I have been trying to communicate, trying to get a repayment plan, you can't get an answer from anybody. I've emailed the CEO, there's no response, so all I'm trying to do is get a repayment plan that is best for me. They want me to pay my rent on this, by the 7th, and turn around in five days and pay another $200. So basically, I would be giving them my whole check within 14 days. I'm the only one working in my household at this time. COVID has really set us back, so we're like living in survival mode. I just got COVID and was out of work for a month from March to April, that's why I'm in this situation that I'm in. But there is no, there's no recourse. Residents can't go anywhere or say anything, so we have to do these desperate measures to come and speak to city council for somebody to hear. And for my neighbors that don't speak English or write, like they have nothing. So in 30 days, you're looking at possibly over 11 evictions, going and living, what, behind Overlake Church and safe parking, like that's not an answer either. And so my biggest worry right now is my daughter coming home from college, and we're homeless, living in our car, because we can't get any resources or any help from Imagine Housing or Allied. And I'm one of the ones that I go to work, I do the best I can. We're all just trying to live and survive, and we're in a very nice place in Redmond, and we just need the resources. And we need Imagine Housing to be held accountable. And I know the city of Redmond does issue out funding to them, and where's the accountability if it's for, if it's for case management? And we're not getting any of case management? If we were getting case management, we probably wouldn't even be in the situation about to be evicted in the first place if that was actually being. So thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate any follow-up.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson, I have, you put your phone number here, so I gave you my card, but I also sent your phone number off to our staff member as well, so we'll try to connect with you tomorrow, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, we have David Morton, and then David Haynes.
May I begin? Good evening, esteemed council members and honorable mayor, I'm David Morton. The proposed industrial growth center in southeast Redmond that is to be located on the critical aquifer recharge areas, Caras 1 and 2, could pollute Redmond's drinking water aquifer, which provides 40% of Redmond's drinking water. Redmond wants to promote economic development, but the city should also prioritize the protection of natural resources and public health. The aquifer was down there long before anyone built industry on it. The Growth Management Act requires cities to adopt development regulations that protect critical areas like Caras. The Caras are not physically separated. The difference between Cara 1 and Cara 2 is the time it takes for groundwater contamination to reach Redmond's municipal supply wells. In Cara 1, contaminants take less than five years, while in Cara 2, contaminants take more than five years to reach Redmond's drinking water wells. Two questions should be asked. One, what kind of industrial and manufacturing activities should be allowed on Redmond's Caras? And, two, what kind should not be allowed? Many believe that only environmentally friendly and sustainable industrial and manufacturing activities should be allowed on the Caras. These activities should not negatively impact the quality or quantity of the drinking water aquifer. Furthermore, any industrial activity on the Caras must comply with local and state regulations, and be subject to regular inspections to ensure that they're not harming the environment or public health. Acceptable activities include businesses that produce environmentally friendly products and implement water conservation practices. The city should prioritize the development of industries that recycle their water or do not use large amounts of water. For example, software development companies, accounting and bookkeeping services, call centers, and wholesale and distribution companies should be allowed in the Caras. The GMA requires that comp plans must provide for protection of the quality and quantity of groundwater used for public water supplies. Industrial and manufacturing activities that pose a risk to the drinking water aquifer should not be allowed in the Caras. These activities include those that produce hazardous waste, or that use or emit toxic chemicals. Even if these activities are subject to regulations and inspections, accidents happen, and any spill or leak could have devastating consequences for Redmond's drinking water supply. I strongly urge the city council to consider the potential long-term environmental and health impacts of allowing certain industries in the Caras. The drinking water aquifer beneath the Caras is a precious resource that must be protected for future generations. So I recommend that the council take a precautionary approach and allow only activities that have been thoroughly vetted for their potential impact on the environment and public health. In conclusion, I ask that Redmond prioritize the protection of their drinking water aquifer when considering the development of the industrial growth center in southeast Redmond. Only environmentally friendly and sustainable industrial and manufacturing activities should be allowed in the Caras. Any activity that poses a risk to the aquifer should be prohibited. Let's look forward to a healthy and prosperous future for Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have David Haynes.
Hi, thank you. David Haynes, Redmond, Overlake. Did you hear about the overdose at the Overlake Safeway a couple weekends ago, where the guy turned purple? I called the cops an hour before he died because he was wigging out on the corner of store blocking my way with a needle. They didn't do anything. The nexus of crime, public safety, and the homeless crisis is the exemption of low-level drug pushers from jail. There is a lawless boundary between Redmond and Bellevue, and if you cross the street on 24th Northeast, the cops stop their pursuit. If you go into Bellevue after committing a crime in Redmond, the Redmond cops refuse to help notify Bellevue. It just happened a couple weeks ago. It's like you make a complaint to the cops, and all they do is cite a law or a political excuse why they aren't going to fight crime properly. We need a codified law that stipulates, if you're smoking crack, meth, shooting up heroin, fentanyl, or trank, that you're a suicidal, self-destructive, public safety, and health hazard threat to the community, and that you need to be trespassed immediately, especially if you're within 25 feet of the sidewalk, a store, the park, or the bus stop, and forced into jail or low-security addiction treatment. And we need the cops required to start asking and civilly interrogating, questioning all of these junkies that are roaming around my neighborhood to find out where they keep getting the drugs to go shut it down. I've given the license plate number and descriptions of a drug pusher at the parking lot pushing on these homeless people, and the civilian dispatch kept acting like a criminal defense lawyer, never helping. And when they do dispatch, they aren't verbatim specifically relaying the accurate information, resulting in no arrest. The drugs keep coming in because the cops are not doing their job properly. They keep looking for excuses not to do their job fighting crime. Instead, it's like racist woke sociology, miseducated leaders doing coffee propaganda outreach, hanging out with law-abiding citizens, falsely assuring us that we're safe because the cops are around. But when the cops are not around, and we got a problem, and we call the cops, they sit there and argue with us about the law, and while they aren't going to do their job properly, perhaps city council should kick out the police chief and his employees from City Hall and into the neighborhood to bust the evil drug pushers and round up all these junkie thieves who are spilling into the community from Seattle, which already imploded, and is the reason why surrounding jurisdictions are suffering the same unconstitutional police reform. Thank you.
Thank you. The Clerk's Office received no request to speak remotely. Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled? Seeing none, let's try this one more time. We'll do a voice vote this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. That was so fun. I shouldn't find that that fun, but it's fun. Next up, we have a staff report on the fourth quarter 2022 financial report. Kelly Cochran, interim finance director, will introduce this item.
I'm here today to provide you the final financial report for the 2021-22 biennium. I'll provide a brief overview of some of our major funds, go over next steps that you can expect from the finance department in the coming months. Just a note that we are still in the process of closing out the year, and we're going through those year-end processes. Some of the numbers that we're reviewing tonight may be adjusted, and I'll let you know if that happens. So, starting with general fund revenues, we did collect approximately $53 million more than our target, which was really our set budget. That includes an additional $6 million that was not anticipated in the forecast for the 23-24 biennium. The major contributors to those revenues have been our sales and use taxes, and I'll provide some more information on that in some coming slides. The next is our business licenses and our permit fees. Business licenses, we did see additional revenues in the last year as we moved to the state system for a collection. So we do have our eye on that revenue source, learning more about what those collections look like through the state. Permit revenue continued to come in high through the fourth quarter, and we did see some additional revenue that we hadn't expected in the forecast from that as well. The final contributor is our utility taxes. In the fourth quarter, we collected an additional $2.2 million that hadn't been anticipated, and we are looking at how we can adjust our forecast going forward based on those numbers. So looking a little bit at our sales and use tax, as you're aware, we collected quite a bit from sales tax on construction in the last biennium, approximately $35 million. But we also did see some growth in our ongoing retail sales, mostly due to accommodations, retail, food services, and recreation. So we saw some recovery from the pandemic, and we saw some growth as well. The year-end numbers for sales tax came within $300,000 of our forecast, so I think that our forecast for the next biennium is pretty solid. I've been watching those numbers, and so far, the first couple months of the year look to be right on target. Just a reminder that the amount of sales tax on construction that we received in the last biennium has really been, you know, quite above what we normally anticipate. Over the last five, six years, you can see the differences. We did, in the 23-24 budget, plan for more of that sales tax and use that as a revenue source where we hadn't in the past. Looking at our ongoing revenue by sector, in 2022, we saw growth in most all sectors with the exception of information. The information number for 2021 was above average, and so really where we landed in '22 is where we would expect to be. So happy to see this kind of recovery, and especially seeing it kind of hitting all of our sectors. It's showing well for our recovery. On the expenditure side, we did come in under our target by about $6 million. That is just a little bit more than a million dollars more than we had expected, so again, we saw some good savings there. As you can see from the graph, we experienced some economic pressures towards the end of the biennium. We had some high CPI adjustments that impacted salaries and benefits, we saw inflation, and we were dealing with some supply chain issues and delays to some of our projects, which increased some of our costs as well. Happy to report that our ongoing revenues have rebounded, and we're now seeing a healthy margin between our revenue and our expenditures. You can see that in the beginning of the biennium, and even at a couple points during that timeframe, we struggled a bit, and we are now, I think, experiencing, we're back to where we really should be. The water, wastewater utility also recovered quite nicely from the pandemic. We are at about $3.8 million above our expenditures. Primary reasons for that is we did experience some pretty high summer consumption, both in 2021, with a really early start to the summer, temperatures of 106 degrees. In 2022, it was a late start to summer, but it peaked quite high, and that allowed us to collect some revenues in that area. We also saw reduced expenditures from Cascade Water Alliance, which helped our savings there as well. Customer base-wise, as we discussed in the forecast for 23-24, we've seen quite a bit of growth. Certainly, the development that we're seeing is providing for growth in our customer base, and that has led to some of the collection of the revenue as well. So between growth and recovery, I think we're doing quite well. The one customer class that we have been keeping an eye on is our commercial customer class. So if you look at the green line, that is 2020, and compared to the top line, which is our average, that is how far we fell. So looking at 2022, we landed not quite where our average for 2015 to 2019 is, but we landed very close to where we expected to be. The remaining amount that we have yet to recover from is due to construction really at Microsoft. The Microsoft Refresh project has taken quite a number of meters offline. Microsoft is our number-one customer in the water utility. Some of those meters have gone back in at the end of 2022, the remaining amount are going back in this year. So by the end of the year, we should see full recovery in the commercial class. The rest of the utility is doing really well. We saw a lot of growth in the multifamily class, and our residential class has really been unchanged since we saw kind of an uptick in that when people went home to work during the pandemic. So things are going very strongly for this utility. The other fund that we've had an eye on during the pandemic is our RAF fund, our Recreation Activity Fund. They've done an excellent job, and you can tell by this slide that they are really back where they are supposed to be. They are self-sufficient, and they didn't need some of the planned subsidy from the general fund during the last biennium. They were able to get their programs back online and running, doing very, very well. Our CIP has been plagued in the last year with quite a bit of disruption because of the pandemic, supply chain issues, staff shortages, things like that. We still ended with a spend rate of 71%, which is high for us, and we're doing quite well. Projects that didn't complete last year have carried over to this year, and I have not heard that anything will not be completed. Next steps, I'll be coming to you in the next month or two with a first-quarter report. This will be a new report. We are working with a new data set, and we're hoping to refresh what it is that we share with council, so I'll be working on that. We'll also be bringing forward a budget adjustment, probably in the June timeframe, to adjust for the beginning fund balances for 23-24 based on the actuals from 2022, and any other budget adjustments that are needed to help align decisions that council has made this year with our budget. During that timeframe, I'll also provide you with an update on the forecast. If there's any revenue sources that I'm concerned about at that time, I'll let you know. We certainly have an eye on some of the economic conditions, expecting that we will see some of our revenues start to slow. That is what I have for you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Cochran. Are there any questions? I don't see any. Oh, I saw one. Council Vice President.
Two questions, just in terms of interpreting this data. One on the CIP is... One, on the CIP, is the number that you put here, is that likely to be the percentage that we'll see once you do the final wrap-up, or do you expect that that'll change a little bit more as you're doing that?
It's possible that this one might change a little bit. Typically, when expenditures come in at the beginning of the year, we would accrue them back to the last year, so if anything comes in, we will need to accrue it back. Our accounting division is still going through some of that work, so it's possible there may seem to be some adjustments.
All right. And similarly, in terms of what we might expect, I know during our budget, we did allocate some funds using the forecast, assuming a certain amount of ending fund balance that would be left over, and you said that we were pretty close to what the projections were. So, does that mean that we're about on for what we plan to spend in terms of ending fund balance?
Right.
Or do you think there'll be any big changes?
I think there will be some surplus that we'll bring forward in the June timeframe as part of the budget adjustment. At this point, I'm thinking it's somewhere between $5 to $6 million.
Okay.
With the additional revenue that we brought and then some of the under expenditures that we had.
Great, and we'll be looking at that in the Fact Committee in June?
I would say June.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Not a question, but I can't help but comment on just the story that's told in these graphs from the beginning of 2021, that, you know, nine months into the pandemic, to seeing how many of these gaps are now closed because of every decision that every staff member made from the beginning of the biennium to the end of the biennium. So, Ms. Cochran, to your team, and every director and their teams, and all the decisions made along the way, just immense gratitude for helping us be where we are today.
Thank you very much.
I don't see any more questions or comments. Thank you so much, and please thank your team for all their work.
Will do, thank you.
Our next item of business is ombuds reports. We have Councilmember Kahn for the month of March, and then Council Vice President Kritzer for the month of April. And, Ms. Cochran, can you stop sharing your screen, please, on the Teams meeting? Thank you. Councilmember Kahn, do you have any wrap-up?
I have no outstanding items.
Great, great. Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer?
We've received quite a few messages in the last two weeks. We received a concern from a resident around some RVs that were parking long-term on 160th Ave., Northeast, and are working with our staff to be able to address that issue and make sure that the people who are living there are addressed, those issues are addressed. I think we're having a little mic issue there.
Try again.
Come over here, we'll see how that goes. And we received a question about county grants for senior citizens from a resident, and our Parks and Rec staff got back to them, in particular, talking about the Silver Sneakers Program and as well as our opportunities that they wanted to let this resident know and others about, opportunities for fee assistance. So, if people want to be able to access our Parks and Recreation programming, there are opportunities for scholarships, fee assistance. It shouldn't be a barrier for people to be able to access our programming. And we also received some feedback on the Redmond Town Center zoning, and I let that resident know a little bit more about the process going forward on that particular decision. Also received some feedback on growth in Redmond, and I encourage that resident to get involved in Redmond 2050 if they want to be able to direct our growth. We received an email from a resident, and there was concerns from just reading the email from other councilmembers that this resident may have a behavioral health need or support, and so I was able to connect with our mobile integrated health team, who followed up to just check in to make sure, did they need any sort of support or casework, and want to thank Liz Downs for following up on that. It turned out the resident actually lived in Snoqualmie, and she was able to work with the community health team there. So, just wanted to let the council know I followed up on that. We also got some questions about the Sunrise Hugh Project, and our planning director followed up on that. Also, from the same resident, got some information on their comments and thoughts on council meetings, as well as inviting us to Redmond Historical Society event. I also got a question from a resident around our city waste events. They were trying to recycle a vacuum and wanted to figure out whether the city could help them with that, and I directed them to some of our staff on that. We also got some comments from a resident on a variety of issues, including public transportation for the mayor or access for that, as well as state legislation affecting seniors and some other topics. We also got an invitation to join a youth mental health conference later this month. I plan to attend the end of that conference, at the end of the day, so maybe some of our other councilmembers will be going to that, too. It's pretty cool, it'll be happening in Redmond. And got back to them about that. We also received a question from a resident with concerns around some of the length of parking lines in the Penny Lane neighborhood because of some of the construction that's been going on there, and some of our staff looked at it, and they actually did respond and make some changes in that area in response to what the resident had suggested to be able to increase safety. I also met with a group to talk about some of our tenant protections and some of the experiences of renters in our city. And as a follow-up, I also was able to talk with ELAP and the Eastside Legal Assistance Program, and wanted to share some information they shared with me, which is that they're going to be holding a workshop regarding tenants' rights on May 9 at 6:00 p.m. at the Redmond Library. In particular, going to be kind of covering some of the renters' rights around repairs and habitability in their apartments. And then, finally, we had a message from Dr. Morden about Southeast Redmond Growth Centers, so similar to some of the comments tonight, but our planning director, I know, got back to him, and we'll continue to follow up on some of those issues, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Council President?
Thank you. I received some news that the CERT folks have been dismissed, so I'm going to be following up with the fire chief to learn about the new plans for the volunteer program and what opportunities there may be for those folks to continue their volunteer service. I also received a communication from a community member that the Salary Commission meeting for this week had been canceled, and they were confused as to when the next meeting was going to be, and followed up and sent on the message from Director Laird that that next one will be the regularly scheduled one, which I believe is next Thursday. I don't have the email in front of me at the moment, but followed up on that communication as well.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. In regard... It's not working. Thank you. In regards to the recent change with the emergency response volunteers, the city has announced a change to that program, so I'm actually in the process of scheduling a meeting already with the chief and Ms. Figueroa. So, Council President Forsyth, if you wanted to join that conversation, we could just do that together. Okay, great. Moving on, last time I reported that I had met with a group of folks working on renter protections and some of the feedback about our work here in Redmond. This time, I'm here to report that I also met with a local landlord to get to hear a bit more about their experience since we passed those protections here in Redmond. I helped a community group get connected to Jason Brown because they're very interested in scheduling some volunteer projects here in Redmond for their group. I was invited to visit the Nature Vision Preschool at Farrell McWharter, and that was a really lovely visit. The three-year-olds in the preschool, these are the babies that were born in the scariest months of the pandemic, and to meet them today as young environmentalists and really curious kids, and to have them having that experience at one of our best parks, that's really lovely. Council recently just worked on their contract with Nature Vision for summer camp, too. So, all around, just really proud to say that that is a partner that we have here at the city, and I'm really grateful for their work. Last month, in a follow-up to Mr. Haynes's comments about the traffic on Turing Street in Overlake and the speeds through there, I did work with Director Burt and his team on that a little bit. Well, they did some work. They assessed that, yeah, there's some traffic calming needed there. So, there's some crosswalks coming that are going to help folks access our newest park more safely in this summer, getting across Turing Street over into the park, as well as some speed limit signs and some other traffic calming measures happening there. So, I thank Mr. Haynes for calling that to our attention, and of course, the Public Works Team for such a thorough response to that. So, that's going to be a good improvement over in Overlake. Lastly, I typically hold my office hours on the second and fourth Thursday in the Redmond Library from 3:00 to 5:00. I am unable to hold those hours on May 25th. If you have any questions, you can email me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? I don't see any, but I do want to remind those listening that there is going to be a celebration of life for former councilmember Nancy McCormick this Saturday at 3:00 p.m. here in council chambers, so if you would like to join us, or if you know friends of hers who would like to come, please share the word. That is coming right up. Our next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Council President Forsyth?
Thank you. I attended the Deputy Mayor and Council President SCA meeting. We talked a lot about DADUs and middle housing and what's going on at the state level. One fun thing to note is there's going to be some new ferry access from Des Moines to Seattle, and it's going to be a pilot program, so if you have any reason to take that ferry, it could be pretty fun. It doesn't run very late, so make sure you check the schedule. Also, I wanted to share that Des Moines will be doing a drone show based off of our lead over their waterfront for the Fourth of July, so they're very excited about it. They were taking a vote last week, so hopefully it is happening. Sorry if I misspoke. But, they're a little worried about wind, so we'll see if it actually happens, and it could be pretty cool over the water. And then, I also wanted to share with everyone from the FBI cohort that I'm in, the website ic3, the letter I, the letter C, and the number 3.org, for the latest financial scams and reports. So, if you get a phone call that's kind of, you're not sure if it's real, that is a great website to go and update yourself on the latest scams that are out there, and you can also report if you were attempted to be scammed, so ic3.org.
Good information, thank you. Any other committee reports? Council Vice President?
Oh, they're working now. Okay, great. Today, I attended on behalf of the Riot Eight Salmon Recovery Council a celebration event for actually finishing one of the projects that Riot Eight and King County and City of Seattle have worked on collaboratively, the Riverbend Levy Setback and Flood Plan Restoration Project based on the Cedar River. Really cool project that, in particular, Riot Eight helped to direct and secure nearly $12 million in local, state, and federal grant funds to be able to do. It's an exciting project in particular because, in case people don't know that much about floodplains, I'll just give a quick moment. Floodplains, they provide a place of refuge for young salmon to get out of fast-moving waters, and this is an area that has had a lot of flooding. In fact, as they began this project, which they had said they were concerned, they were trying to work on it, especially because there's this levee they thought might break, there was a huge flood in early 2020, and the levee broke. And there was originally housing that was all around the river that they helped to do some relocation on, who had dealt with flooding. So, it was both an important project in terms of impact for the community, but also in terms of salmon, they made all these kind of new pieces within there that'll allow young salmon to have slower-moving water where they can feed and grow and improve their chances of survival on the way up to the ocean. So, anyway, just wanted to highlight that, and it was a really cool collaboration between our different jurisdictions, and I think there'll be some fun press on in the next couple of days, so you guys can look at. I'll send you, once there's some more videos and other things about it. Secondly, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting along with Councilmember Stewart last week. We got an update from Sound Transit, which I thought was significant, given some of the information about what's going on with the light rail. It does sound like still the starter line, East Link Connection, is moving forward, hopefully with an estimated timeline for spring 2024, and then for the overall East Link, moving forward in spring 2025 is their goal, despite the setbacks on the I-90 corridor. And it was interesting to hear from the CEO, Julie Tim, about, you know, some of the lessons learned that have happened around some of the contracting, and I appreciated that. One of the key issues that they noted on whether or not the starter line is going to go forward is making sure that there's enough staff to be able to operate, and I think they're still working that out with Metro, between whether they'd have enough bus drivers and enough operators to be able to do that. And they also did just an update specifically on downtown Redmond and noted that the opening timeframe for that will be spring 2025, but maybe they could go a little bit earlier as part of the starter line if things keep going well there. And then, they also gave us a little update on the K Line, which is a bus line that's going to be going through the east side, that has been advanced from where it was originally proposed in terms of timeline, so some good transit coming up in our area. And then, finally, I also attended the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association. Top discussion there was around some new wastewater rates that'll be coming back to us soon. Also, that there's going, there's proposed to be a Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levee renewal that's going to be coming on the ballot, not that's separate from the one that we have currently, which, everyone, please make sure to get your ballots in by April 25th for the behavioral health levee. But, yeah, we were talking about a future potential levee, and also discussed the affordable housing countywide planning policies, and had some interesting discussion amongst jurisdictions on that, and I shared out, you know, some of Redmond's real support for being able to advance affordable housing across our region.
Great, thank you. And as a follow-up to the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levee, I am part of Regional Policy Committee, and so we sent that back to the council, County Council, at a 10-cent rate, and they just changed it to a 12-cent rate, so it's coming back to RPC. But, if there are community members out there who are either supportive of a higher rate, 10 cents would be the rate that we had at six years ago as well, so that's keeping the same rate. Or if you're concerned about a higher rate, email the King County Council or the Regional Policy Committee and let us know what you think. It's important to hear from a lot of people out there in our community. So, thanks for bringing that up. I see that Councilmember Anderson had her hand up to report out.
I do. It's not quite in order as would be great to flow into this conversation, so I apologize, but I did write a good amount down as well. I attended the Public Works Board meeting earlier this month, so great news. Both chambers of the legislature have issued budgets, including $400 million for the Public Works Board this year. That's exciting. The board's planning for two significant loan cycles this biennium, which is more than usual, with the first open honor around May 8, 2023. Just for fun fact, Redmond is the only city on the east side with an open Public Works Board loan, so it's kind of cool to watch how this program works from the internal side. The cycle is expected to close July 7, and then awards will be out and will be shovels in the ground August 4 or thereafter. We are also working on updating the criteria for loans for broadband with a particular focus on incorporating the unique public outreach needs for distressed and severely distressed communities to meet digital equity goals. Back to behavioral health, at the Healthier Here Board meeting earlier this month, we got a really detailed and very comprehensive summary of the current state of coordinated care in King County, and so for those of you who are not familiar with what the term coordinated care is, it seems to be a rather nebulous term, but it exists to improve health using a whole-person approach through access to insurance, health, mental, and behavioral health care providers and social services that meet basic needs of the individual. So, the summary of the analysis we got was a brief on the state of care for coordinated care that gathered perspectives from different service providers and patients about gaps, barriers, successes, and needed improvements, with the top four suggestions, including data-sharing technology, that I'm sure everybody on council would be super interested in, sustainable funding, of course, and culturally responsive approaches to reach people served by health and social services, and hiring, training, and retraining a sufficient workforce. Earlier today, we had a Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting this afternoon, so thank you, council, for the short meeting. Thank you, Ms. Stewart, for picking up the last item for me, I appreciate that. And then, also, a special thank you to Outreach Coordinator Tisa Rutherford and the Community Court Team for the ride-along earlier this month and visiting the Resource Center at the library. It was... It was eye-opening, and I would recommend every councilmember have an opportunity to take that experience, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a large swath of ideas there. Appreciate it. Any other committee items? Yes, Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I attended the Growth Management Planning Board, where we recommended Kitsap County's countywide planning policies for adoption by the Executive Board. So really exciting. That happens to be where I grew up, and so to be able to see them advance to some of the plans that I get to enjoy here in King County, it's really just exciting. So anyway, that was great to move that along for our partners over in Kitsap County. And then I did want to give a shout-out for any youth that may be listening tonight. The city did actually already advertise this once in the newsletter I saw, and that was great. The Puget Sound Regional Council is having a Summer Planning Academy. So for high schoolers who may be interested in environmental issues, planning for our cities, what great communities look like, the PSRC is running a four-week program over the summer for high schoolers. I believe you have to be 16 years old, and it is a paid program, so check that out on the PSRC website, the Summer Planning Academy. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Carson? And I just want to let everyone know, if we don't end our meeting before 8 o'clock, we will need to take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Challenge.
Well, this shall be short. So I attended last week the Emergency Management Advisory Committee for King County, which I sit as a member of Sound Cities Association, has three positions on the board. We broke out into working groups. Every other month, we're meeting in person, and so we basically do our business meetings virtually, and then we get together and do breakout sessions, which is, I think, turned out to be really, really effective in bringing together people who otherwise, you know, wouldn't be talking after the meeting even. So, and one of the interesting things that happened during one of the breaks was I met some folks from our National Guard, from Joint Base Lewis McCord, and we started talking about our Nike facility up on top of Education Hill, which, as long as I've been on the council, we've never even known anybody that was, you know, like stationed there, or... And so I've made that contact with them to be able to maybe even have a meeting with staff and maybe a few councilmembers to kind of understand, in a natural disaster, how we could work together with the National Guard that's there. So that was a really exciting thing that happened, and it was, I don't know, it was really, really cool to see how what we were working on was developing plans for everyone in, every city in the county, and every organization that is a member of EMAC to basically work on the same basis, so that we are all talking the same language, where, you know, the terms are interchangeable, everybody understands what we're talking about when we say this or that or the other thing. So we're working on some kind of framework for that to work. I think we've really relied on peer-to-peer, in other words, us with a city or us with King County, when we have needs, but this would be a more coordinated effort, and it would be, it would really be instantiated as a process. We would have a process to be able to work through, and so when a city is in need of certain things, there will be a way to do that, and everybody will do it the same way within the county. So anyway, that was, that's the goal, but the side benefit was pretty interesting, and I've contacted the mayor and let her know that we have this opportunity, so I think we should see about taking it.
And CO files, if she hasn't reached out to you yet, is going to talk to you.
Yeah, I haven't checked my mail recently, just in the last day or so, so thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer, did you have another item?
Yes, I realized during my ombuds report, I was reminded by Councilmember Stewart's mention about the youth event, that I didn't include the actual details, which might be helpful, about the Youth Mental Health Conference. It's organized by NAMI Eastside, and it's happening on April 28. And you can go to nami-eastside.org/youth and register for free. It's happening at the Overlake Christian Church from 9:00 to 4:00 on Friday, April 28. So I'd encourage all youth in our area to get engaged there.
Thank you so much. Any other items? Seeing none, that concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Everyone have a great night.